Here.
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 Barton Craig.
Here.
Omar Newark.
Here.
Jackie O'Grady.
Here.
Chris Corry.
Here.
Jesse Burton.
Here.
Alec Borland.
Russ Winn.
Okay, great, thank you very much. We're going to review the Charter Review Committee on preliminary recommended changes. Derek, you want to kind of get us teed up here and moving in the right direction?
Yeah, thank you. Just to sort of make it easier for everyone because there's a number of changes that probably don't require any discussion and then really to give everyone some time to absorb. But I'll run through the entire list of changes that were voted on by the Charter Review Committee. And then at the end, if either the review members who recommended the changes themselves or the council has any questions, you'll have an opportunity to do that.
Okay.
Beginning with the very first change, this is to Section 7 of the Charter, starting on page 15 of your packet, and I'll just describe it very briefly. This is a, was a section that was transitional in nature, talking about the creation of the district, the areas annexed into it. It's totally a transitional element. It has no real continued bearing in the Charter, and so it was recommended for deletion. And there'll be a number of those coming forward. The second change was to Section 18, and that is on page 17 of your packet. The Section 18 deals with the powers of the mayor. The last sentence has been modified to remove provisions regarding a vacancy. And you will see that, along with some sections and changes in Section 21 coming up, I'm addressing vacancies in the city council a little bit differently, cleaning up the language, making it a little more clear. But this is a non-substantive change at this moment, that this is some language that, in context, it'll make sense.
And Derek, hang on just a second. I think Greg had a question.
Sure. I apologize, I was trying to get some from my cup. Are we asking questions on the, as we're going through here, or?
I think that, just for ease, I'll run through everything.
Okay.
Because there's really probably only four or five major substantive changes, and then it'll be easier to have a conversation about those a few times to absorb it.
Got you.
The next section on page 18 is Section 19, and this is the compensation provisions for the city council. There's been a couple of changes here. The first change is, you're not getting a raise, it's just a reflection of the current rates versus what they were 10 years ago. There's also been a change in the COLA formula. The COLA is now specifically tied to an index by the Department of Labor, and the requirement that the cost of living adjustment be linked to raises to the staff has been decoupled. So now there could be a COLA adjustment regardless of whether the city staff has got an increase. Additionally, you'll see a lot of underlined at the bottom of that section, there's been a committee that will be created, proposed to be created, to provide recommendations on council salary increases in the future. It's not mandatory. It's mandatory that the committee's created, but the, their recommendations are not mandatory, but they do provide some basis for someone to look at the issue and provide recommendations to the city council. If those recommendations, or your own recommendations to make increases are adopted, they will go into effect at the next subsequent election. So that's been, that's been added as well. The next change, starting also on page 18, and tied to that, that Section 18 change made earlier, is at the bottom of Section 21, so you'll see at the beginning of page 19. The short answer is for this, is if there is a vacancy on the city council, whether it's the mayor or any other district member, if that vacancy occurs within six months of a previously scheduled general election, then the vacancy will just stand open until that general election. There will be no need for special election to fill that seat. The duties of the mayor, should the mayor be vacant, will be transferred to the deputy mayor. As you all recall, deputy mayor is selected by the council members. So those provisions would be in place, there would be some continuity of leadership, there wouldn't be the need to scramble to set up a special election. You would just wait that, those six months. And that's not really a very substantive change from what the current practice is. The major change is that the deputy mayor will roll into that role instead of wait, calling for an immediate special election. The next change is on page 19, about three quarters of the way down, it's to Section 24. This change, currently we have a provision in the Charter that says that special meetings cannot be called with any less than 12 hours' notice. Now, the Florida Attorney General has recommended no less than 24, so we were already being fairly aggressive with that in the Charter. The recommendation from the committee at this point is to give no less than 48 hours' notice before any meetings could be called, and that is exclusive of weekends. So therefore, you could not call for a, on a Friday late afternoon for a Monday meeting. It would have to be 48 full hours before that meeting could be called. There is an exception for emergencies. And so you'll see that that language about a special meeting for emergencies to deal with only issues resulting from those emergencies could still be called in less than 12 hours' notice. The next change is on page 20, and this is to your fairly voluminous provisions regarding ordinance adoptions in the Charter. This was a recommendation made by myself to the committee, and my concern is that we have adopted a number of extenuous policies with respect to the adoption of ordinances. Some of you all will recall that once an ordinance is adopted, we have to wait 30 days before it's published, there, before it goes into effect. We also have post-adoption publishing rules that go into effect. Florida law already sets out the process by which you notice and adopt ordinances. My concern is that any additional time or any additional hoops that you have to jump through is one more thing you may miss, and particularly some of the ordinances you may be adopting to address an urgent situation will not be able to go into effect in time. And so that, that was the thought pattern behind that. The next section that we may change, recommendation changed to was Section 21, I'm sorry, Section 32, beginning on page 21. Similar to the last change, this is a, I'll call this a chap, a section that was adopted when the city was created, but no longer, due to technical reasons, is really required. In the past, almost all jurisdictions codified their ordinances in big binder books that you would review. This section lays out the process for codifying our ordinances, regulations, and it sets, it has to be done every so many years. We currently both have all of our ordinances available online, the city's website, and we publish them far more quickly on munico.com or other services. So really wasn't a need to have this, it was just another step that the city really doesn't need to follow. We do have binders, and they are updated more frequently than this Charter provision currently provides. So this is a, I'll call it a non-substantive change, it's just technology has moved faster than, than the original Charter contemplated. The next change is to Section 44, and that is beginning on page 25. This requires, and this is one of the last things we adopted from the recommendations, city council action on the budget, it required that we publish the entire budget in the newspaper. We already publish the adoption of the budget on, online, that's because there has been a change, Florida statutes requires it, wants it to be online, available for, it's one of the few things we are absolutely required to always have online. And we already send, of course, mailed notices of ad lorm taxes, everyone with the dates of our budget hearings and the ad lorm dates. So this was just an extenuous policy that was asked by finance if we could remove, really anything additional to add on that. The next change is to Section 47, on page 26. This is lapse in appropriations, and what basically this provision provides for is that if there is an expenditure that's listed on the budget that hasn't been expended in three years, it rolls off the budget. That excludes CIP items. Quite frankly, the CIP is already required now by, by Florida law to be adopted each year. We also adopt our budget each year, and so really these, these budget items are re-appropriated every year regardless. So the, the concept of the lapse is not really, it's hierarchical. We couldn't really find a reason why it was adopted, it is contained in a number of Charters. In fact, I contacted the city of Cape Coral, who recently just added it to their Charter, and I couldn't get an answer out of them why they did it. I think, I think the real issue is, good budget keeping and record keeping will show that if you're not spending money, if you've allocated money, you're not spending it, you'll address that internally, and we're not sure that really needed to be a Charter provision. The next section, the change is to chapter, I'm sorry, Section 50 on page 27, it's a similar change. This, as I said earlier, now Chapter 163 requires that we adopt our CIP and that the items in that CIP be items that are funded in the next five years. We have to adopt it every year. We adopted it last year in December. So this provision sort, is a little bit in conflict with it, but we're just trying to take out unnecessary complications between what we already do and what's required by state law, and as with some of the other changes, every time we add a few more hoops, we run the possibility of making the process more complex than it needs to be. The next change is to Section 56. This is one you may want to have some conversation with about at the end of my run-through. There are effectively changes, this section came in two parts, and were voted in at different times during the committee's work. The first section has to do with land use decisions, and in addition to the ex parte disclosures that are already required when there's going to be communications on a land use item, adding to that a disclosure of any campaign contributions by any of the interested parties, and the way we, we phrase that was, who have communicated interest. That means, you know, you wouldn't, you don't have to be clairvoyant to know that this property has a neighbor who hasn't voiced a concern, but if they voiced a concern to you or to the council, and you know that that person has contributed to your campaign in the past, you have a duty to disclose that. The second, second part of the proposed changes may or may not be mutually exclusive of the first, depending on how it ultimately comes out, but this provision would be to end all ex parte communications on any land use related matter. So the applicant would not be able to make their case outside of the public hearing so that everyone would have the benefit of having those communications. However, there would also be no ex parte communications between the council and staff or neighbors or any other interested parties. That was, I think the thought would be to focus all the, the communications and the entire record on that, that occurs at the meeting. Section 62 is the next change, that is on page 34. This is a provision, and in part echoing Chapter 112, the state ethics law, which provides and prohibits potential abuse by elected officials who may be, attempt to coerce staff into supporting particular candidates or measures. The committee further recommended prohibiting the public officers, being high-level city officials, myself, Arlene, some of the senior staff, from being engaged, supporting, or contributing to particular candidates running for city office, as well as prohibiting them from running for office themselves. The next change is to Section 68, on page 35. This was another transitional element, talking about early resumption of duties prior to 2000, when the city came into effect. That's transitional element, recommending removal. The next section is 7072, that is also a transitional element. It has to do with, I'm sorry, with Section 70.
I apologize.
Transitional ordinances and resolutions. Again, this is another residual item from when the city was incorporated, recommending removal. Section 71 and 72 deal with transitional comprehensive plan and land development regulations coming over from Lee County. All of those have been supplanted by this point, so other than historical reasons, there's no value of keeping this in the Charter, recommending removal. The next item is Section 73. This has to do with state revenue share, sharing, and originally this was slated for removal, along with the remainder of the transitional elements. I did request that we clean up the language to show that the Florida legislature in creating the city Benita provided that we would be entitled to using the Fire District and the other special districts for the calculation of shared revenue. So the way this works is that state revenue sharing operates as there's a statutory calculation. If there is enough of a millage calculated by a city based on whatever their prevailing millage rate is, they are then entitled to, I want to call it, free money from the state. The state has formulated dividend out to all the cities that meet that criteria. Limited governments like ourselves, Village Vestero, Fort Myers Beach, on their own generally do not meet those requirements. But the legislature in creating those cities has said, well, because you are not a full-service district, you don't have a fire district, for instance, or maybe you don't have a library like in Fort Myers Beach, we will add those millages to yours in order to get you across that line. Because if, but for those independent special districts, you would have to provide those services, you would hit those millage rates. We removed it at Fort Myers Beach, and I was the town attorney there, there was some question about whether that would negatively impact them, that language, so it did not, but to protect you from other questions about that, I just left the language in place. And then the final transitional element is Section 76, and it is elimination of transitional elements from the Charter. It basically said that you could by adoption of ordinance, remove all those elements. Now, what that means is, if, if your recommendations are all, the recommendations of the committee are accepted, we will adopt an ordinance that removes the vast majority of these changes. The remainder we go to referendum. And that is the end of my report on the recommendations.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Do you want to go back? And obviously, there's some items, I would imagine, through there. We've, we can start with our discussion item on Section 15. Why don't we do that, but feel free to take this conversation anywhere you want it to go, on any of the various sections. Section 15 deals with the total cap versus contribution limits?
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, what, there were a couple of items that the committee did not get to a final vote on. They felt that they were issues of concern, but that they wanted to bring them to the council, to see if the council wished either to provide direction for them to look at or wished them to look into deeper. They, they were discussed repeatedly, but could not come to a consensus, and so I think I believe the thought was that bringing them to the council may get some direction to see if there's even support for those type of amendments by the council, and then they would, with your direction, go back and look at them further.
Support to look into?
These are, on the last item on the agenda, this is Section 15, 19, 24, and 46. There are no proposed languages for any of those. I can tell you that, Section 15, and you'll all see a hand out in front of you, Section 15 of the current Benita Charter has a fairly complicated, all of you obviously are very familiar with it, having gone through elections yourself, complicated scheme for figuring out what the total dollar amount of contribution limits are for campaigns. The committee looked at that issue, they looked, asked me to look at other areas, and so what I provided them was a list of what all the neighbors provide. And effectively, all the neighbors, with a few exceptions, match the Florida state's already contribution limits of $1,000 per candidate. Now, that does not exclude, that excludes PACs, and it excludes campaign contributions made by the candidate themselves, but the individual or business contributions are limited to $1,000. Some of the limits you'll see on this form that are from Sarasota County that show limits below that, I looked at the history of those. For instance, the city of Venice is at $500. Well, up until just a few years ago, the statutory limit was not 1,000, it was 500. So they had tied theirs to the, to the limit when it was 500. When it went up, it stayed in the Charter because they didn't go to referendum. Sarasota County, city of Sarasota, and Northport all have fairly kept theirs low, that are not.
Can I just ask Peter a quick procedural question here? First of all, thanks to everybody for all the hard work you put in. I know all of council would feel that way. I've got a question of exactly what we're doing here today, because I believe there's supposed to be a public hearing on the back of what the advisory committee comes up with. And then it comes to city council, for city council to make a decision, and city council, I believe, can accept, reject, change, do whatever they want with any of the suggestions by the advisory committee. It's kind of like the zoning board, you don't have to accept it, whatever. So I'm kind of assuming what we're doing today is not getting ahead of the public hearing and making a decision on what the advisory board has done, as much as having a report from you as to what they, where they are, and maybe giving direction, look into this more or less, or am I wrong?
Correct. The, the group couldn't come to an agreement on just these issues.
Right.
And we wanted direction from you, whether they were important to do.
Right.
Whether they were things that you thought were not, not important.
To look into.
And how to go ahead.
To look into.
Correct.
Okay, not, this is what we believe.
No. In regard to, one, let's take that you've heard already, the ethics. John is going to talk about that.
Right.
The pros and cons, and, you know, what we had.
Right.
Otherwise, these are the.
But we're not making decisions on any of that today.
No.
Or?
You're just telling us, go ahead or don't go ahead.
Well.
Or, yeah, that could be looked into, so that's.
Well, don't go ahead would be a decision, and I'm just concerned that the advisory committee, you know, have its independent view, not our view, to them.
I can assure you, this group has its own independent view.
Which would then go to a public hearing before we say, do this, do that.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Thanks.
Great. Derek, do you have any?
No, I was just going to say, the, the recommendations they've already gone through will go before the, the public hearings and then come back to you again. It was, the idea was, I think, these outstanding items, and actually, Section 19, we have language for it, I think they just wanted to flush it out further. If there was more time to address those, to kind of have time before they go to a public hearing, that time is running out, so I think that the idea was the committee might see if there was any input the city council had on that before it went to those public hearings.
Amy.
When this comes to a vote, do they vote on it in total or section by section?
They have been voting section by section.
And when the people vote, do they do it section by section?
Yes. The people will vote section by section.
Okay. Like, I have a question about something that's not, that's not been suggested here in regard, and I don't know if it's appropriate to do it, you know, but under Section 24, where they talk about meetings, and I'm not sure whether this creates a problem for, for the council, should we want to have what we call workshops, you know, where maybe one or two or three of us meet together? Is this for, I don't understand how that meeting language would work. Because we did that in the past, and there was some, I guess, not confusion, but we weren't, it wasn't quite clear whether that was okay.
So, there had been a discussion where you set up almost like a subcommittee of the council.
Correct.
Right.
Where you would meet in the, it would be an opportunity, the public could attend the meeting.
Correct.
Minutes were taken, but then the minutes would be approved in the regular city council meeting, and there was different topics.
And so we could still, we could still do that, that's, that just doesn't create a problem for that, that's all, my only question.
Well, the, it's, it's, because your prior, because your Charter said 12 hours, the issue probably never came to a question. There's nothing in Section 24 that says distinguishes between meetings at which actions are taken and workshops. You would want to advertise any meeting, more than two of you getting together, to meet those requirements, though they could not take action as the city council. I would say that we would probably, it's one address with the committee later on, making a carve-out for workshops or our meetings where there's no action taken, where they can just use.
Just like information gathering.
Correct. Or the other, the other, sort of, now that we're talking about, the other sort of possibility is there are occasions where more than one city council member may come and speak at the MPO, or, well, not the MPO, it's not a good example, at the Lee County Commission meeting. And to avoid someone making a charge of sunshine violations, you, we may advertise it as a meeting of the city council for those meetings, and if it happened very quickly, even though there'd be no action by the city council, this may prohibit that. So we'll, we'll look at that and.
Well, we've, we've done that in a lot of cases.
Okay. Thank you.
Good for now, Amy?
Yeah, I'm trying to go.
Yeah, no, no, that's great.
In order of what you.
Sure, no, absolutely. Jesse?
Just to piggyback on what Amy was saying, as, as the person who came up with this specific amendment, just to kind of get everybody in the room on the same page, how this came to life, this had to do with a land use issue that the city had last year, where on a Friday they decided that we're going to have a Monday vote, and I'm talking about the cannabis dispensary issue. So as far as workshops, I'm not worried about that. I just want to make sure that there's 48 business hours for any time that you all are going to go up there and make a decision that's going to drastically alter anything going on in Benita. So to give those folks 48 business hours to show up, so, point being, no Friday at 4:00 for a Monday at 8:00 a.m. meeting. That's, that's the spirit of what I'm trying to do, so workshops, carve that out however you want, I'm just saying logistical votes, I want the people of Benita to have enough response time.
That makes sense. With the number of, we could, to call a meeting, again, getting back to my question, the fact that we have like four, what if two of us want to work on some special thing to?
That's not a special session.
Do we have to, do we have to have?
We'll, we'll address that back at the committee, I don't want to get in the crafting language right here, but basically, we'll, we'll, I'll bring back a proposal for the committee to look at for recommendations that says something for workshops or no action meetings, where no action is taken, something like that's probably fine.
And previously, you've had the ability to do that within your regular city council meeting, you've suggested that two or more of you might be meeting on a specific topic, and then the staff, we've advertised that, made sure the public had access, but no decision making was happening at those.
Okay, thank you.
I have one that, in my view, I'd appreciate more thought on by the committee. That's on page 17.
Could you tell me the section, because I have it blown up so I can see it.
It's, section, page 17, it's Section 15.
15?
Yeah, referendum, campaign spending limits.
Yeah.
And I don't have an answer, I just have something to think about, which is, so we have limits on expenditure, but PACs are mentioned here, but PACs that form outside of this are, as I understand, in addition to this. So for example, let's say my district, $12,000 or something like that is my limit. If some PAC goes out and gets formed and wants to spend $100,000 without coordination with me, for me, or against me, that's not covered by this. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So we basically, you know, the guys who wrote this 16, 18 years ago had obviously some idea of, we want, Jackie, when you were in, we want modest local government spending. Now the reality is, we have PACs, so I'd appreciate if the.
I can assure you, we didn't even think of PACs then.
All right, right. So I, I would just appreciate if the committee went back and reflected on that, what the effect of that is, because we basically have an open back door, we have a limit, but we have an open back door for unlimited spending, and to me, that's something I want to be focused on.
But can, Derek, this is, you, can they, can the Charter limit that? Because.
That's what they have to figure out.
But legally, I don't think they can, that's why I'm asking Derek, because if you have no, if you have no recollection of it.
Right.
You're not supposed to know about it, that's what a PC is for, you not knowing about it.
Right.
How is the Charter going to know about it?
Right.
How are they going to know that you've already spent it? So is it legal to limit a PC?
And we, we've talked quite a bit about this at the Charter Review level, and, but we're looking at the campaign contributions, not, not the rest, this particular section, but they probably combine, and a lot of the discussion had to go around the idea of, you can't limit, you can't limit that money that's not under the control of the candidate. At the same time, I think there was some conversation saying, well.
I agree.
Given that and the amount of misinformation that is out there, should the campaign limits be increased to allow the candidates to be able to?
Right, so that's what.
And there's, there's, there's other things you can do that affect it, but, but no, you can't regulate something. And you could see this language very clearly says, no candidate shall, you know. shall, you know, take contributions in excess, but doesn't provide PAC money.
So, I'm not trying to be presumptuous about a conclusion, I just want them to look at it.
No.
The answer might be, we've got a dysfunctional system, we have to get rid of it, you know, but I'm, I don't think that's our place today to tell them, they, I think they have to go back to...
No, I just didn't want to waste their time if it's illegal.
Well, he'll tell them.
No, we'll, we'll look into that.
Just to look into.
Okay.
Jesse?
I think it's unconstitutional.
Number one, you, you can't regulate PACs, so how would you recommend that you do that?
See, this is the conversation, this is the conversation I don't want to get into today.
Well, here's the question, if, if we're not gonna meet again, and we're gonna meet,
Right.
and you expect us to do that, give us an idea of how you would regulate PACs.
I didn't say that.
He didn't say that.
I didn't say that.
We are going to look into the fact of PACs, and can they be regulated or not? We are going to do that, he's not going one way or the other.
Right, because he knows the answer's no.
He don't...
Well, the, Jesse, the other answer might be, get rid of the limit.
Possibly, and that's, that's what I'm...
That's the way to do it.
I mean, part of the problem with this situation, think about it, this is an antiquated way to decide how we're gonna vote. This, we're one of the only cities who does it this way.
With what?
Does it based on population, a, a, and, and then says you can spend this much and this much, look at the list, I mean, we're one of few who actually do it. I mean, most of these municipalities are saying, go to Florida statute. Why are we recreating the wheel?
We're not on this list, what it, how do, what do you, what do we follow? We don't follow statutes.
Yeah, this is a standout, we're not on it.
We're, 'cause we have a special, special...
Right, exactly, that's, that's my point.
I only have one suggestion, please go look at it, not discuss it today.
Correct.
Because we're not here to tell you, you're the advisory committee, you're supposed to come and...
And we will look at it.
Let us know what you think.
Exactly.
Honestly.
Honestly, let us know what you think, which is great. And Pete, that was item 15.
Yeah.
So, we've talked about 15. Do you guys wanna move on to 19, or do you want, what do you think?
Sure.
I've, I, you'll see that I've given you language for 19 that has been voted on.
Yeah, that's great.
I think that's really just, if you had any comments on it, because this is, this was something that they wanted to discuss, that the committee wanted to discuss with you, but they also did vote on language.
Which one?
Nineteen.
Section 19.
It's on page 18.
What do you want me to say?
So, the committee discussed the opportunity of having another reappointed committee, and wanted to kind of feel some thoughts on that from the city council.
Section 19.
If I may?
So, the question is, well, I mean, if we can decide that.
I just have one concern, I mean, to me, the top section of it's contradictory to the bottom section. Top section says this amount compensation shall be revised annually based on the cost of living, COLA. Then the bottom, it says every three to five, or every, no less than every four years, you'll get a committee to look at it. I just want clarification my own, the top part is an automatic COLA, the bottom part is like a salary adjustment, are we paying the right amount of money for our population?
Yeah.
So, I wanted was clarification on that. Oh, then my second...
Just an advisory thing.
My second question would be to the, to the lawyer, to the lawyer and to the assistant city man, or to the city manager, been here four years, I ain't getting no COLA. That's, all right, so... It's already in there. We shouldn't be getting...
No, only if the...
Because it was tied to the same time and manner as city employees. City employees are no longer on COLA, so that's why we haven't got COLA.
That's why it's dysfunctional. Same. You're just saying.
And we should say thank you to these...
Tying it to the index just makes the most sense. I mean, just tied to an index, and then there's, it's not a part, it's, there's...
The only suggestion I would make is that you pick a month and a date.
Oh.
Because they do that monthly from year to year. I know in my previous life, or my union life, we picked a date, that way it could be budgeted on it, we knew the CPI for April of the previous year, that way you know it's 2.2 for that region, and now they can budget for it instead of waiting till, oh, let's pick September's, and oh, we're a month away, we don't know what it is, we don't have anything budgeted.
What, what is the best date ballpark, are we thinking?
We'll pick the date.
Yeah.
See what social security does, they think to it annually.
Yeah, just a, a date, just that way they know...
We got it, we got it.
We'll provide staff update on how we do our process as well for the board to discuss.
Okay. Do we wanna move on to Section 24? Discussion of city council meetings, meeting schedule, evening meetings. I guess we did discuss this, the 48-hour notice.
Yeah.
So...
But there is also a, a discussion about, on the questions asked, whether or not the city council would, should consider moving to all-night meetings, like that was...
So, we've had this discussion at city council, we made a decision, but I don't know that we wanna cramp the style of this group, I mean, if the group wants to go make a recommendation, I don't have an issue with that, but not here, go back in their committee.
And Derek, just for the record, that was, it wasn't all-night meetings, it was a staggered meeting schedule that incorporated like two then one, and two then one, it wasn't all...
Two in the day, one at night.
Exactly.
So, just for background, the discussion we had was about, well, Pete, it was going to the night meetings all the time, and I think one of the concerns, I know personally, was staff have lives too, they have kids at home, et cetera, and before we do that shift, maybe we should think twice about it, and then we decided not to, but I don't think that prohibits this advisory committee from thinking about it if they want to.
The reason I wanted to do it was really because I had a number of, you know, parents, is it, was there something going on? I guess, good?
No, we're just smiling.
Okay. I just, the reason I wanted to do it is because we have a lot of families who don't have the ability to come during the day, and the retirees can come during the day, and that's great, they don't like to come at night, but many of them could come at night. The parents and, and the folks who are working 40 hours a week, they don't have the ability to come during the day because they're at work. So, what I was saying is if we spread it out, we still have the night meeting, we can still get everybody who wants to go at night, fine, but day, it would open up for more of the general population of people who are not currently participating to potentially come, because if it's during the middle of the day, they can't come, it's not an option. That's why this came back up. So, yes, I care about the city staff, but I care about the citizens, so that's why I wanted to think about this.
But these citizens also have the same concerns as family, they have family at home, as you said.
Right.
So, they might also wanna stay at home after working all day. So, just by moving it to night doesn't mean that people who have nine-to-five jobs are gonna come.
Doesn't mean that they're gonna come, but it means they have the ability to come.
Why don't we talk about this at the meeting?
Because nine-to-five, they don't, nine-to-five, they don't have the ability to if they're at work, is my point.
All right, let's stop.
So, we'll look forward to what your committee decides on this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next section, 46F, and this was an interesting discussion at the committee level.
Page, Derek, 26.
It's on page 26.
Thank you.
The very last subsection of Section 46. City Charter hereby provides for a legal debt limit which caps the amount of outstanding long-term debt by billies to 10% of the assessed value within the city. We went and looked up what that value is, and it was like $140 million, or some astronomical amount of money, well beyond what the, the, I think the city would ever really consider borrowing, so the...
Should be in the billions.
$100 billion.
It may, it may have been in the billions.
1.4 billion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 140 billion.
Yeah.
So, the question really was, should that number be adjusted to something that's realistic as a, as a...
So, is there controversy about that?
No, we just didn't come up with a number on it.
Whoa.
I mean, at least in half, I mean, more than that would...
They're private.
Are you feeling that was high or low? How much did, not really, Imperial, the cost, did it do?
If property values, 11 billion dollars.
You're talking about the storm waters?
No, no, when, when you go...
$140 billion.
I mean, large projects, but easily...
Value arose.
Or they're thinking, well...
Well, there's two, there's two, two steel all-messes, it's worse than the 10%, the 10, 5%, we looked at other communities, it's generic, the other part is tying it to assessed value. So, you could change the, what is calculated versus the, the dollar amount, I think the question that my notes indicated from the, the committee was, they didn't wanna go off into a long research project to try and figure out what would be reasonable without the council saying this is something that warranted looking...
So, we can get a consensus here, what kind of numbers are we really talking, 'cause...
Right.
The billions, as you said, isn't it?
It's 1 billion, is what it is, 1 billion.
Right.
If it's, if it's, if it's taxable value, it's 1.13.
One, yeah.
That's what I mean.
But if it's assessed, it's higher.
It's assessed property value, that's, that's 1 billion dollars.
There's assessed or taxable.
But it's still ridiculous, in my opinion. If it's a billion plus or minus a hundred million, you know, that's, we should be talking at hundreds of millions, but we might be able to, and I don't remember this, there are some metrics that people use for municipalities to determine their implied rating system, and they look at, you know, there's some connection between revenues, I think. Anyway, look at it, ask Ann about the finances, 'cause I'm, I'm really shaky on this, but you could look at that, or we could just pick a number, you know?
I, I will, I'll look at...
Committee will come back in a minute.
Yes, I mean, it has, it needs a little more research, and I...
I know some people...
Well, I guess they're asking.
I pointed this out, so I'm in favor of make, it should definitely be less than a billion, and it should be something in light of where we wanna maintain our, you know, our rating system, which we don't have, we're not even rated. And it also should be related to debt burden, you know, so there are lots of things that you could look at, and I think that Ann Wright is probably a place you should start, because they have all these benchmarks that people use in finance.
Okay. Thank you.
And I personally don't care what that number is, it's somewhat reasonable.
Right. Gotcha.
Did we get a list of comparable municipalities?
We have things.
We do.
Yeah, we looked at some, but they were all, they were all similar by 10%.
Yeah.
Now, the other, the other part is a lot of them, like similar communities like neighboring Fort Myers Beach, it's on the water, but it's a much smaller community compared to how large Benita is, and that, you know...
But we, we will look at it.
Great, and then, city name change, from city of Benita Springs to Benita Beach.
I'll leave that to the committee.
We have one person, two maybe, and so that's why we could, we did not agree on this.
Okay.
And, but, no, we, we didn't vote because it was not, we didn't vote.
Yeah.
But did you, did, did anyone look into the expense of what that would be?
Well, that's, that's the problem. You have to look at it with the expenses, and, and there are places that we found, or someone, maybe you...
Yeah, I can speak to it a bit, just, I, I brought it up, not in, there was no one in the committee that basically said, hey, we, we're in favor of this, it was simply something to bring up to say, would council want us to even consider studying that concept? Some cities have done it, and their taxable revenue has gone up significantly, but is that taxable revenue increase greater than the cost of actually doing it? We don't have the slightest idea. And so, if this were ever to go to a public, to have people actually vote on it, just wondering whether the council wanted us to do further research so that people could be provided with that type of information, 'cause we don't have any idea about any of it at this time. But there has been a lot of people on the beach, that if you go into most of the shops there, most of the t-shirts, everything says Benita Beach, it doesn't say City of Benita Springs.
I know, yeah. I couldn't find one.
Yeah, the, the entire city seems to be more focused on the beach than it is on the older spring, and tourist dollar-wise, it certainly seems to be beneficial to a lot of cities that have done it, but I've, none of us know any idea about the expenses, what, what's involved, that's why we're bringing it up, if it's even something that we should be investigating.
It seems to me that it's too late in this, in our workings, but it might be something that you all wanna look at and have researched.
I was gonna say something similar, which is, this is a big branding exercise, they are talking about.
Yeah, so, it's not something that we could put on the ballot and give anybody any kind of feeling as to the cost, or the benefits. Or the benefits.
Would they, would that be something we would do through the charter anyway?
Ultimately, you would need to change it through a...
You would have to change the charter.
So, like, if the city decided they wanna do, we could do a little investigation, and then we could call a charter commission, even though it isn't...
You could, you could, you could put forth a change.
You could put forth your own change.
Right. Okay.
The issue with Benita Springs for me is I abbreviate BS Council, BS, you know, when I do my files, so, you know, so...
It's very appropriate.
It's always a VVV.
It's very appropriate.
No, because I'd also label, if I was coming down here, BS vacation, damn.
We got the BS bullshit.
Yeah, they're saying BS, BS, high school.
Well, I think it's a whole, I think it's a branding question, even, in addition to the, the cost thing, and whether, and, and the direction in which the city is going, you know, we, we might have been a, a beach community maybe 10 years ago, but I, I'm not sure that we're totally identified in that way, and we, and maybe we, we don't wanna be either, 'cause that's just one aspect of the attraction to tourism, is the beach.
And springs in the same way. Are we, are we still as tied into springs?
Fair point.
You know, Benita is a, means beautiful, and given that, I think Lover's Key State Park is a part of Benita, if you had to choose at least one defining quality, are beautiful beaches.
Right.
So, if you're sitting in the Midwest looking online at a place to go visit in Florida, and you see Benita Springs, that's no different than Ocala or any other place that's in the middle of Florida, versus if you see Benita Beach, I think it'd be certainly more, or at least when you come home to tell your friends where you live, where you just bought your condo...
You're supposed to say Naples, you know.
The original call was Naples Beach.
You do go. People haven't heard of Benita Springs.
But we, but we're not going to look into this any further, we, but it, we are giving you the idea of paint jobs.
It's an interesting concept that I think needs a lot of effort.
Yeah.
All right, miscellaneous round, what, John, anything, wanna kind of go around the horn, John, anything in particular you wanna talk about, or expound upon, or?
Well, I, I, now I feel obligated to talk about this one section, which is...
56.
56, so that's on page 33, on the ethics issue. And the fact that I'm talking about it is in no way a reflection on the level of ethics within the committee here, so just wanted to talk about this change. For the most part, the, our work on the committee has resulted in these proposed changes, I mean, it's a legislative process, it may not have started that way where we all agreed, but in the end, we've pretty much all agreed to the changes that you see in front of you on a unanimous vote. A couple of these were not that way, so we thought we'd just kind of give you a quick pro and con, and kind of let you know what we're wrestling with here. On 56, the, the standards of, of conduct, the, and the disclosure of campaign contributions from any individual or organization that might be affected by a land use decision, could be the applicant, their consultants, adjacent property owners, or any individual who's communicated an interest, so that could include anybody who comes to the mic and speaks up. I, you know, I, I understand there's a, a concern here that, in regard to full disclosure. I think it's not particularly workable system. First of all, all of the campaign contributions are already disclosed and made available to the public. Second, there's probably hardly a, a meeting that goes by that you don't have something that could be construed as land use decision in front of you, so I'm not sure how you can stay on top of this, especially if ahead of a vote, you don't know who might come up and talk about it, or, I mean, of course, you know the developer, you know the applicant, whoever that might be, but it, it makes it sort of an after-the-fact disclosure with regard to campaign contributions. And I, I raise a concern, i- if it were me, and it was a big issue like, I don't know, vote access here that involves a, a big part of the community, you might just end up saying, okay, here's everybody who's contributed to my campaign, you know, figure out, you know, I can't pick out the hundred people who have talked to me, or have come up and, and spoken on this issue. So you, you kind of, the default is, well, here's just everybody who's contributed to my campaign. So I think it's a, a difficult issue to manage, even though it's a, a laudable effort to try and make sure that if anybody's got a financial interest in what's happening, they, that that's been made known to the public.
Can I just make an observation? I think you got a broad problem, because you got a broad umbrella. If you treat everything as a land use issue, I think you got a fair point. I'm just thinking back, Pete, like, two weeks ago, Adam Boitana came up with a proposal, and I, both Peter and I disclosed that he had contributed, or his family had contributed to us, in the context of our run for office. I also mentioned, pardon me, Jesse, that I'm supporting the guy, just as transparency. So, I mean, you might want to think about, if you limit the ambit, it's not everything that could be land use, it's basically, call it what you want, let the lawyer tell you, zoning, an example like that, you just make a disclosure, that's all.
But I even think that disclosure would be too much. You've already said that he's contributed, so why make another point of it? Are you having, you know, to me, that's sort of like, oh, should I be concerned? And then, but they do know.
Right.
It's public, it's public information.
Yeah.
And people look at that. But the other issue was, you know, that you're supporting him, well, you don't have to add that.
Right.
I mean, it makes no difference, really.
Right.
So you just get more.
I could be in a position where somebody, oh, he's a friend, I gave him some money, I might be against whatever his position is with this land use issue.
Well, suggesting is, well, suggesting is a way to go back and think about it.
Yes.
Not have it every land used remotely, and, you know, maybe more limited.
Well, keep it simple.
Right.
It's already disclosed, and then furthermore, if you're gonna try to do it one way, the barn door has to swing both ways. So now, every little list that you send out on email, every person who sends that, forwards that, sends something to the city, they too are now invested in a project or problem.
And that's nonsense.
Now, now do you have to do the disclosure there too? And then what if somebody misses one? We have a disclosure, why are we trying to re, add more bureaucracy to this process? I don't understand.
And just to finish this, cut the point here, I guess, just so, well, then you got the second new section in fifty-six that talks about the council should not unintentionally engage in ex parte communications, I'm sorry, should not intentionally engage with any individuals regarding land use petition. So this, this is in here, and there's some sentiment that this, again, would be an effort of good government at avoiding undue influence in these land use decisions. On the other hand, you know, in terms of open government, is it appropriate that the council's able to talk to the people in town and get their view?
Exactly.
Not only the developer, but also anybody who's got a position on the issue. And I think it sort of unduly ties the hand, and makes us, sort of implies that the, you know, the council can't be trusted to have these sort of meetings and properly disclose them. And then, I know, you know, there are others like Omar, who, you know, has seen some of this firsthand in terms of, you know, development projects, and, you know, is, has expressed concern about having to make decisions on the fly. So there's a concern that the council would be less informed, I mean, we know the staff does a good job of informing you, but if, if there's not some communication between the council and developers, somebody might have a very good idea as to how to change this project in a way that's gonna make it acceptable for everybody, but you're kind of, you're putting the developer, or whoever the applicant is on the spot, to try and react to something that comes down from the, from the council, so. So those are, I, I think I tried to express some of the back and forth on that.
Go ahead, Chris, and then Jesse.
Okay, I'm just a little bit surprised that council wants to get involved with discussions with developers over land use. I look at the downtown Benita Springs lot layouts, it certainly doesn't appear that there are credible developers that are coming into Benita Springs, wanting to develop the bamboo parcel, or the longitude parcel. You have to ask yourself the question, why? And I think it, it gets involved with the whole notion that somehow, in order to gain access to that, that ground and be able to buy it, first of all, need to figure out who it is on council I've got to go to and talk to. The city, on the other hand, has set up the CDA, it's set up its own zoning board, and it's coming up, as I understand, with a form use code for the development of downtown. So my question would be, is why in the world would council get involved in something that has taken pains over the years to set up an administrative solution and let that administrative solution work? The way that it is now, I think there's a lot of frustration with respect to people that work for the city, where sometimes they're not even asked as to what their opinion is with respect to a piece of development. Popeye's Chicken, for example, where, they ask the question, where does CDA, where does zoning come out on? What I've seen in cities around the country is what, you know, is more of a trend to a separation, that says, look, we're gonna have a redevelopment, a body that will, that will utilize a form-based code, and we'll have a land clearance authority that will make the parcels available. The council should restrict itself, I think, to those situations where it has to act as a quasi judicial body to make sure everybody understands this was a fair process. Everybody got a same bite of the apple, everybody got to have a fair hearing before the zoning board and the CDA for their building permits. And we, as a council, much like it would be if somebody came to you and say, hey, I need, I need the help with the CDA for getting a, a building permit, because I understand you stay out of that process.
Well, you know, if you, if you gave that as a hypothetical, I would say to you, I'm sorry, I would call someone, I always do, direct them back to coun, to city staff. And I think everyone on council is, relies a little too much on staff to do our research and to do, but we do turn, I at least, John Domer is like on speed dial, if someone calls about land development and that, I, one, I tell them, I don't want, I don't meet with land developers. You know, you have a, you make sure you dot your i's and cross your t's when you come in front of the zoning board, and then it comes in front of us. So get your act together, and find out what the zoning board's requiring of you. And don't hurt our water, don't hurt our environment, and so I don't need to meet with you, so I never, well, I mean, but, you see, the, the way this is written, the city council shall not intentionally engage, therefore I can't go to any downtown meetings. Right, and I mean, I, and, and actually, I can't even go to a Republican meeting, I can't go to a Democrat meeting that is a group of people, because eventually, someone is gonna talk, you know, just passing. And, and, you know, I think it's a little insulting if someone says that we can't be trusted, and I know nobody here is saying that, but it does sort of imply that we need to really watch you folks, and there's no amount of money, I think you could give any one of the persons on council, that would, you know, change their integritys.
No, I'm not suggesting that.
And their vote on something.
In fact, the, the whole purpose of this is to protect council, is to protect somebody saying, well, you know, I didn't talk to...
But then I can't find out what's going on in the community, what's the vibe, what is the concern?
But you've got your staff that is able to report to you as to what's going on.
Oh, so now staff is gonna go to all these extra meetings and come back?
And they are, also, the staff tells us about something, that would be ex parte too.
Well, you could exempt, you could exempt staff.
Then, then, no, then it's one-sided, so.
It would be what?
What?
That would be wrong. I've talked to three different attorneys, every one has said, if you're gonna deny being able to talk or hear something from a developer, you gotta talk to nobody.
That's right.
That's right.
Nobody.
That's right.
Can't be done. Can't be done.
That's what it says.
Jesse?
The committee, the committee. It is, it's, if you're looking at a major project, to have zero discussion with, with any of our representatives is absolutely ridiculous, because there's gonna be give and take in any type of development. How are they gonna do give and take on the dais? How are you gonna make decisions if you have a bunch of money on the line, and you're trying to figure out how you're gonna best do it? How are you gonna do that on the dais? Furthermore, we have zoning for a reason. Once again, we have zoning for a reason, so why are we putting zoning elements into a charter review? And you know what? If, if you get people who are up there on the dais, we, we sit here, we, you sit there and you say there's no credible developers who want to develop down in Old Forty-One, I know a ton, okay? So your assessment of whether they're good or not good, how could you know that when we haven't even had an RFP? How could you know that?
How do you?
Oh, okay, so, well, because I actually have, I go to the downtown alliance meetings, I sit down with people who are consistently getting the runaround, the bureaucratic runaround from the city. I sent one to Mike Gibson earlier this week. So, and the problem is this, the problem is this, if you get people who are gonna get up there, finally get all their plans, and it's the first time it's been discussed, now we have an issue, so you're gonna agree or you're not gonna agree, and so if you don't agree, now you're back in the bureaucratic loop. Two day, two weeks later, a month later, now everything's on hold, because, you know, I want this parking lot to be two, you want it to be one, but we have to do it on the day of, and if we don't do it the day of, we can't talk between now and then. That's nonsensical.
Well, can I just make a suggestion that you guys?
That's why you have to have it go back to us.
Yeah, go back, and I, I mean, I think it would be fair, if there's a financial gain or some other type of gain, then that should be disclosed, but...
Well, if that's the case, you should screw, screw yourself, use yourself. If you got, if you're gonna get financial gain for something, you should.
Exactly, that's what I said, that, that, that should be, like, that's what we need. If there's a financial gain, or a financial, or even a...
But that's part of one-one-two already.
I don't know how you could do this, but the problem I have with ex parte, be that with the staff, or, or with developers, is that I don't feel comfortable having individual council people negotiate anything. I, I, I think that should, if we're gonna be in negotiations, then everybody in the council should be part of that. And there's a way of, what's the word, of accommodating the sensitivities of particular council, which in the long run, increases the chances that they would be a positive vote. I think that's the way I see it. So I personally, I did do it initially, I just felt so uncomfortable when I first got on the council, because of just that reason. It wasn't just an informational thing, and I disagree that even with ex parte, that you cannot go to, like, the neighborhood meetings that we do at, anybody that, it's a one-way street, you can listen to anything you want, as long as you don't ask any questions, and you don't engage that person. And the same thing with, like, I can, well, the way this is written, because I engage individuals just by every day when I take a walk, and when something came up, everybody in my neighborhood would stop me and say, I want to talk about, and have a comment about something, and I would say, well, I'll listen, but I can't comment, or, I, if I, if you comment, I gotta write you down on my report, and that was my normal thing, and it wasn't, you know, they didn't even understand what was happening there, and I didn't mind doing that.
They know they, they saw their councilwoman, and they had questions, or wanted to talk.
And then when I reported it, I, half the time, I didn't even know their names, I would say, met a resident, and they generally were in favor, or they're generally, or they've made this point, as much as I can remember. But it puts an onus on the council, if you have a lot of these, to even report it properly, you know? So, but I think the reason that I don't do it is because I don't think it's good for individuals to negotiate with the, with the developer. The staff has a, has a format that they use in order to try to get concessions or improvements to the plan. That's part of their job, is part of planning, so I can understand that. But even that, sometimes I think they go a little bit much, but then the council could come back and say, I don't like that little negotiation, or that little improvement that came out of this, out of the staff, or out of the zoning. We still have the point to review it. So I don't know how you could write it so that we could still listen to everybody, because I think we should, but I think the interchange is what bothers me.
Well, I think that's up to each individual, I mean, you shouldn't be negotiating with them anyway, because that's not what your job is, is to do, is, your job as ex parte is to go there and listen, and get their, get what they're trying to say, hey, here's what, here's my structure, here's my, my zoning change, this is why it would be beneficial to me.
And to the community.
And to the community, well, and to my, to my development, and so on. There shouldn't be a back and forth, or a give and take, hey, well, we'll give you seventy-five if you put three couplas on there and put whatever on there.
But I think that's the issue.
But again, that comes back to us, though, of doing what's right, as a, as, as an individual.
We're human, remember that.
Well, I remember that, but, you know, let, let's use you versus me, or whatever. If you just go in there and, listen, you don't have to say a word, all right, thanks, bye.
But it was interesting that, you know, we're talking about this issue, and Jesse just said a moment ago, there was a, a guy that had a problem about a development, something in the bureaucracy, whatever, but, okay, correct me if, when I say something wrong, you referred him to Mike, to get his problem resolved.
Okay, so I was at the downtown alliance, I met somebody who was having continual issues with the city, I directed him to the councilman of which he resides, which is Mike Gibson in District Five, there's nothing wrong with that.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Okay, then.
Can I make two observations to think about?
And then, yeah, Pete, then Mike.
Yeah, one is, if you look at cities that do have ex parte limitations, there is flexibility, including some major cities in Florida. Second is, just an observation, which is, we've got a system set up where someone comes in, he wants a change in the zoning law, something special for him or her, all right? He's not going through a standard procedure. We have a system set up, which includes public meetings, disclosure meetings to the public, then we have work at, besides the staff work, we have work at the advisory board, which is the zoning board, all right? So if you have a situation where it goes beyond information at the city council meeting, people will quickly figure out, well, the shortest distance between two points is to just, to council people, and cut through all this red tape. Well, the red tape is our entire process. So if you're opening a door to ex parte, where people can give feedback and talk, you might as well get rid of the advisory board. You might want to get rid of the public information meeting. There's a, there's a reason why, when you have a zoning board meeting, and you have a city council meeting, there's a stenographer there taking notes of everything that's being said. That's the record in this ex parte proceeding. If you have the opportunity through an open door over here, to have people give signals and figure out what's good or bad, you might as well get rid of the stenographer, you might as well get rid of the ex parte meeting, you might as well get rid of the advisory board, and just say, figure out a way to talk to four out of seven city council people. So I actually do think, in my mind, for this council, this is too strict, not too strict for me, but not, it's too strict, and there are ways where you could have an informational meeting with a developer, I believe, with staff present, because part of it is, staff can get undercut to, listen to what the developer has to say, so at least you can begin to understand, there can be a lot of complexity in a process. But the, the silent nod, the, I think you should put this on the third floor, and this on the second floor, you, you're walking into a situation where you might as well get rid of your whole zoning process. So I would just suggest you think about that. There can be, I think there can be flexibility in this.
Thanks. Mike, and then Jesse.
Well, the, two, two things, the example you gave, you know, you said that we have staff and community development, and there's a process for them to go through, but if they're building something that they're entitled to, it never comes to council anyway.
Correct.
So the whole reason why they want to talk to council ahead of time is to know if they're wasting their time or not. For example, the previous council that I was on, Wawa came to us and wanted ex parte meetings, and to judge, you know, they wanted to put a Wawa in on Old Forty-One and Benita Beach Road, and they never came to council, so I assume that the majority of council that they talked to was not happy with that. So, I mean, that just saved our time from having to have a meeting that we denied on, it saved the developer time and money from having to go through the whole meeting process. So that's why I'm for ex parte.
So you're, you're fairly sure then that the residents didn't want Wawa either?
Right.
Oh, I, I got a lot of residents that, you know, keep asking me, when are we getting a Wawa? It seems like everybody wants a Wawa, except the last council, so.
Is that like a public?
No, it's a gas station sandwich type store. Jesse, and then Omer.
If that were the case, shouldn't we know, shouldn't the public know why that decision was made, rather than do it, you know, one-on-one, or four of them, or whatever it is? I don't think that's a good process.
Well, it saves the person a lot of money, because if, if the council was gonna vote that way anyway, look how much time and money is wasted by having to put...
Yeah, see, I wouldn't be able to answer that person.
Without the whole thing, and, you know, the whole thing laid out on you, and a, a discussion with people, that doesn't, that bothers me, but, you know, that your entitlement to your opinion.
Jesse?
I agree with Councilman Gibson, but I, I just want to say that if you think red tape is the process, then we might as well get rid of elected officials and turn the keys over to the staff. We might as well turn the keys over to the staff, because that's the reason that you all are elected, is to make the decisions. So to sit here and say that red tape is the process, I can't believe we have an elected official who would say red tape is the process. Red tape is the problem.
I don't think Councilman O'Flynn was basically saying it's a, it's a mess, and you just have to dive in and deal with it. I think what he was saying is that you have to go through the zoning board, and you have to, you know...
And, and my point is, we have a zoning board, and what we're trying to do here, what he was trying to do is bring zoning things onto the charter review. What I'm saying is they're separate and...
No, no, I'm sorry.
They are separate. What do you mean, you're sorry? Yes, they are separate.
I'm sorry, you're not saying what he said. He did not say that.
He did not say what?
It's all good, it's all good. Please go think about it, whatever it says.
Do you have another point on this, or?
No, I think that's...
No, okay, Omer, and then Greg.
So just, I, I, speaking to, ultimately, I think we're all trying to get the highest quality development everyone can get into Benita Springs, and not have any kind of financial undue influence, or some type of backroom deal. So what we're ultimately trying to do is bring everything to the light. So I don't think not having ex parte brings everything to the light, it just shuts it all out, and actually forces it more into the dark. Now, if you want high-quality development, I know a lot of very good, high-quality developers, and the larger national developers, the, the better quality developers, their number one resistance to actually doing a project is risk.
to actually doing a project is risk. So they can absolutely underwrite their finances very, very well, what they have a very difficult time with is risk. If you don't have any communication, you're going to ask a firm to come in and do a large-scale project, they're going to spend, you're asking them to forward millions of dollars into enormous amounts of analysis that city staff requests. There's a lot of requests, the amount of specialists, just on my project alone, every meeting was, you know, tens of thousands of dollars. You have so many specialists involved, and to go through that entire process with no idea whatsoever what actually the city wants, and when you are asking for a zoning change, as you mentioned...
Right.
That's the one unique situation where there really isn't something in the code that says, hey, to get greater density, you have to do X, Y, Z. That's the situation in which a large-scale developer is going to want to have some understanding of what they can and can't do. That shouldn't be in a backroom, and it shouldn't be an individual council member giving a nod or a wink. But if we had it more transparent, where there is ex parte, maybe the ex parte is the entire staff together, sitting down, listening to it, and just expressing their concerns, you know? Hey, here are the issues that we see potential concerns coming up that are emotionally connected to us, which often is, at least in my process, was very different than staff. So the thing that staff may have been very concerned with were issues that council members were not concerned with, and there were things that council members were concerned with that simply never even came up through a year-and-a-half-long process of working with staff. So I just think that you'll get better quality development by having more open communication.
I think you're making very fair points, and I think there's a way to massage that language, inconsistent with that.
And we'll look at other places that allow...
Well, I was just going to say, if council has high-quality development, doesn't have these issues, and there's a whole other thing going on here, which is, our code has so many ambiguities, and I'm sure you know this, so many confusing things, that staff gets put adrift of, like, what the heck did that person mean? So part of the hard work that the zoning board is doing is actually bringing more certainty to that. And that's what the, you know, and I've been pushing, let's get it done, but that's what the form-based code's all about, which is, let's lay that out, and then it's administrative, get out of the way, and it gives developers a much, quality developers, a much more clear view of what the heck do these people want, as opposed to try to be figuring it out.
Put all those numbers together, that's what we were...
We'll take care of that.
Greg, you're good? Okay. Jackie, I'm just kind of moving around the table here, something you want to dive in and for at the moment, or, you're good? Okay, thank you for all your...
Do everything that you agree.
Yes, yes, Chris? And as you say, I was just kind of going around, but, no?
Nope.
Jesse?
Nope.
Amy?
I have a question on page twenty-six and section forty-seven, where we cross out the things about every appropriation shall lapse at the close of the fiscal year, does that mean that our appropriations don't lapse? Is the converse true? Because I know that with, I'm going to ask this as a specific question, with Art and Public Places, we've kind of discussed, because there's a budget that's in there, and there seems to be this great impetus to spend every dollar at the end of the year, because it goes, so, is that what we're doing here?
I don't believe that addresses that issue. I think what we've talked about is what we probably need to do is get a CIP project for Art and Public Places, and then move that into the different category where it rolls over, but this is...
Why doesn't that happen? I mean, does this apply to everything? This is my question.
In, in theory, this would apply to everything, but in practice, we haven't really been following it.
But should we make that, should we improve that, so it doesn't apply to everything?
Maybe they should look at it.
Yeah.
Well, the issue, the issue is, and so, if, if there's, let's say there's a unexpended allocation, $10,000 for some free fund or something like that, and it goes for three years, this language is saying, in year four, it comes out, but the city passes a new budget every year, basically sets up new things, so in year four, if the city just puts it back on there again, that would be the process to reallocating it. So it's sort of a circular provision, in effect, and it doesn't really change anything in the...
Does that restart the clock?
But there are two, there are two sentences here. The first one does not have anything to do about three years, that's my question. It's the first sentence that I would like clarification.
Every appropriation, except an appropriation from capital expenditure, shall lapse at the end...
We're taking that out.
She's discussing what is a general fund appropriation for, but that's not specific to a capital expenditure, capital project, so it's a, it's a funding item of the Art and Public Places Board, it's not for a particular capital improvement, it's for the overall actions of the board, and typically, that's zeroed out at the end of the fiscal year, it doesn't roll over.
Good, yeah, it should.
Yeah. And then next year, if they put that same amount in...
It doesn't look like it is here.
Oh, I got my...
That's my question. I agree. I don't, why are we taking that first sentence out, is my question?
Because I think as rule, as a budget, it's always zeroed out at the end of the year. They're saying they do it anyhow, whether it's in the charter. Yeah, whether, yeah, that's the way I took it.
So, but we're relying on policy to do that, rather than the charter?
Well, I think we're, we're relying on...
I mean, the reason why we have the policy is because it's happening in the charter.
We're relying on FGFOA, the Florida Government Accounting Standards, to, the proper government standards, like, either through GADs...
What we were trying to figure out is, did this provision provide anything that additional, any additional benefit or policy direction that we weren't otherwise following? And, and speaking with Ann, we could...
Check it out, if this is, you know, if, if we have these accounting standards for fund accounting, but when I, I have concern about this. I don't know what the answer is, but I don't want all those appropriations to roll over, all right? And fix it.
Greg?